Twenty-six, two thousand and thirteen, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the city clerk please take role? Joyce J.
Here.
Joe Demott.
Here.
Davis Reinhardt.
Here.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Bud Starker.
Present.
George Pond.
Present.
Kristy Davis.
Here.
Mike Stites.
Here.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of August twelfth, two thousand and thirteen?
So moved.
Second.
Please pull the council. Motion carries eight zero. Uh, thank you. The first item we have under Proclamations and Ceremonies is the Police Department Citizen Award for Melissa Romero. So I ask the chief and Melissa to please step forward to the podium.
Mayor, council, good evening. I think that might some. You'll recall that Police Department gives out Citizen Awards when officers come across citizens who do an extraordinary act. Benefits to the community or helps others. And I'm pleased tonight to present Melissa Romero with the Citizen Award. I want to tell you a little bit about what she did, what she got engaged in. On May twenty-fifth this year, approximately twelve-thirty, Melissa was driving on West Thirty-Eighth Avenue and Doolan Street. And she observed a male party lying on his left side. It was up the torso of the westbound lane of West Thirty-Eighth Avenue. And his lower half was flying, laying across the sidewalk. The male was unresponsive, breathing, yet had fresh blood coming from his forehead and nose. Melissa stopped, called nine-one-one immediately, and another citizen stopped to assist her. Eventually, Wheat Ridge Police Officer Ernie Botts was sent to the scene and responded. And the male was transported by ambulance for medical care. Fortunately, we found out that no criminal act occurred, but nonetheless, he had had medical down, fell down into a traffic plane. And consequences could have been quite tragic. Melissa showed a great deal of respect by stopping and caring for a stranger who somebody she did not know. Integrity by not just passing by, calling for emergency medical service to respond to shephans individual. Both of these attributes are core values of the city of Wheat Ridge and the Police Department. In addition, she had no obligation as a citizen to stop and render aid to this stranger. Yet she stopped and exposed herself to the hazards being a well-traveled, the hazards being on a well-traveled roadway at twelve-thirty in the morning. She acted in an unsavish manner as a good Samaritan, putting your own safety, for this person's safety, for her own. Melissa had to not stop to render her aid. This victim could easily have been exposed to additional injury and suffering. She showed admirable concern and compassion, and went above and beyond in your willingness to get involved in helping another person be. For your actions, I'm pleased to present you with the Wheat Ridge Police Department Citizen Award, and also the Wheat Ridge Police Department ceremonial challenge. Thank you for your willingness to be. So just in closing, can't say enough about citizens getting involved in positive things in our community. I think in this case, Melissa did that and we're very proud of her actions and certainly in a way we'd like to see with citizenship. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next award, I'd like to call up Patrick Goff and Heather Geier, Nathan Mosley, and Doug Farman, the Finance Director of the City of Littleton. And this is going to be a Budget Presentation Award, Budget Award Presentation.
Hi, I'm Doug Farman, Finance Director for the City of Littleton, and I'm a former Budget and Fiscal Committee Member of the Government Finance Officers Association for the United States and Canada. And I am honored to be here today on behalf of Government Finance Officers to present the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award to the City of Wheat Ridge. The Distinguished Budget Presentation Award has been promoting the preparation of high-quality budget documents since nineteen eighty-four. The purpose of the program is to encourage and assist governments to prepare excellent budget documents for the benefits of citizens and other parties with a vital interest in governmental finances. During the twenty-nine years the program has operated, it has gained the widespread recognition as a premier indicator of excellence in governmental budget reporting. To earn the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, the City of Wheat Ridge had to substantially conform to the program's demanding criteria. Such a record reflects the professionalism and commitment of numerous individuals, as well as many hours of hard work. It also reflects a high degree of dedication and leadership. This is the first time the City of Wheat Ridge has won the award, and this is for the fiscal period beginning January first, twenty thirteen. The Government Finance Officers Association hopes that this award to the City of Wheat Ridge will serve as an example and encourage others to strive for the same high standards in their own budget documents. Therefore, it is my privilege on behalf of the GFOWA to present the City of Wheat Ridge this Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. Thank you, Doug. Appreciate you coming out this evening to present the award to us. I were very honored to accept this GFOWA award. This is the only national award program for budgeting, and this was the first year we applied for the award. And this reflects a significant achievement by our governing body and staff to meet the highest principles of government budgeting. I'd like to thank Heather Geier and Nathan Mosley and Karen Van Eert, who couldn't be here this evening, who help us every year on completing the budget, and especially this last year to be recognized for this award. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is our citizens' right to speak. Citizens who wish may speak on any item that's not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes. Please step forward to the podium and spell your last name for the record for any item that's not on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. It's my understanding we're adding items two and three, Resolution twenty-nine dash two thousand and thirteen to item number two, and item three, which is Resolution thirty dash two thousand and thirteen. Does anybody have a problem adding those two items to the agenda? If not, they'll be added by unanimous consent, and we'll move on to public hearings and ordinances on second reading. Item one is Council Bill number twelve dash two thousand and thirteen. I'm going to open the public hearing, Mr. Starker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm pleased to introduce item number one. This is Council Bill number twelve dash two thousand and one-three, in order to submitting a ballot question to the voters of the city at the November five, two thousand and thirteen election concerning an increase in the sales and use tax rate. At issue in this matter, the City Council directed staff to move forward with a ballot question requesting a one percent increase to the city's sales and use tax rate. To include this question on the two thousand and thirteen ballots, the City Council must set the final ballot language and submit to the Jefferson County Clerk and Recorder by September sixth. Setting the ballot language by ordinance requires a first reading on August twelfth and a second reading and public hearing on August twenty-sixth to meet the deadline. This ordinance, if passed, allows the citizens of our city the opportunity to express their opinion on this tax question by voting in the next general election.
Would the city clerk please assign an ordinance number?
This is ordinance number fifteen forty-two.
Fifteen forty-two?
Fifteen forty-two.
Thank you. We'll move on to staff presentation beyond the executive summary.
We have none. Thank you.
Move on to public comment. Please step forward for item number one. Please spell your last name for the record and state your city or your address.
My name is Tom Radigan, R-A-D-I-G-A-N. And I'm a resident of Wheat Ridge. I'd like to comment on the sales tax increase. I think a thirty-three percent sales tax increase to four percent by the management of Wheat Ridge is shameful mismanagement. Establishing the highest sales tax rate in the area will punish the senior citizens most, more than any other group. Seniors spend a higher percentage of their disposable income in Wheat Ridge and will pay most of the sales tax increase. I read the article in the newspaper and it mentioned that the general fund, I'm not going to mention that number because I think I have the number incorrect in my memo, but we do have an additional reserve. The city has an additional reserve. And in the past, the city has had a reserve fund exceeding ten million dollars. Even with the recent economic downturn and the more than four million dollar loss generated from the Forty-Fourth and Wadsworth redevelopment project, the reserve fund should still have at least six million dollars in it and be more than adequate to cover the city's multi-million dollar unfunded liability from the redevelopment that comes due in two thousand and fourteen. A four percent sales increase will encourage well-known brand retailers to relocate outside of Wheat Ridge. Several recent development sites, current development sites such as Cabela's and Jolly Rancher, Thirty-Eighth and Wadsworth, Forty-Fourth and Wadsworth can only succeed if they are able to attract these well-known retailers. And I have to question whether the highest sales tax rate in the area will help the city keep existing retailers such as Apple Jacks and Wheat Ridge Cyclops. If you care about seniors, if you care about economic redevelopment in Wheat Ridge, if you care about a vibrant city, you will vote against a one percent tax increase. I recommend you consider a one-third percent sales tax increase. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, council. My name is Jesse Hill, H-I-L-L. Live over two nine nine five Chase Street. Tonight's discussion on placing a six-point-five million dollar tax increase on the ballot, it's not really a vote for if you guys are for it or against it. It's really more of a vote on what you have proposed, is this worthy of the citizens to vote on? Will they be able to make an informed and educated vote upcoming? And I obviously see this as no. We have no plan with this, no budget, no timeline, and no accountability. I recommend that you table this until you get the simple requirements done. The respect, you'll learn the respect of the voters if you do this, trust me. If you fail to table this, I offer you three necessary amendments. One, that the tax increase only be spent on the items listed in your language. Remove the "but not limited to." It should be focused on what you truly are proposing, because otherwise, it's all up and out there. Number two, sunset this tax. Give the next council, say, six years to prove that this is a worthy investment into the community. If they approve, they'll continue it on, and we'll be able to continue to invest in our community out here. Number three, please provide some transparency so that any citizens can watch and make sure that every cent spent is accountable and open to the public without special requests. I'm talking about opening the checkbook on this, and we can do this. If you fail to offer any of those amendments, I could understand. I guess I would at least like to, more of a public explanation to the answer a few questions I've had for you, council. I guess, one, why is there no plan on where this money will be spent? Why is there no budget on how much will be spent and where, and how much for roads, or how much for other items you've listed it out? I guess also, like, why would you not want to soundset this? You know, what were the thoughts going into that? And also, last, will this actually solve Wheat Ridge's financial problems? Do you truly believe that? So, council, I look forward to hearing some of these answers tonight. It's an important time to do it. And most of all, the citizens of Wheat Ridge, I really believe, deserve the answers too. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else here to speak at item number one? Seeing none, we'll move on to council questions and comments. Ms. Jane?
As it is written, I will not be voting in favor of this council bill. I feel as though there has not been enough information available to the public about it. More, I am concerned that the amount, four percent, is, does put us too high into the range. I, we have discussed that we have a grocery store economy, therefore, that mount will be coming, as was pointed out. Seniors will be paying more. But when I look at what, I'm more concerned about the fact, well, I'm not saying more, but Lakewood has a three percent range, Golden has three percent, Arvada three-point-four-six, Edgewater three-point-five. I do not think that bodes us well to have a four percent range, a lone city, when we are trying so hard at this time to create economic development. And where that, of course, fits is the fact that if it hampers businesses from coming in here because we have a four percent sales tax, I don't think that's in our best interest because we are trying so hard to change that. I would be more inclined to suggest a smaller amount because when I read as to the need, which is strong, the need is absolutely strong. I wish the public could hear more of that, which they do need to hear, meaning the road situation, the equipment situation. It is very strong need. But I'm thinking that more logical to me tax, sales tax increase would be in the three-and-a-half to three-point-seventy-five, something a little bit lower that I think is more palatable. And there's something else, too, is we're not remembering, or we're forgetting that the Jefferson County Schools will be looking at ninety-nine million, or billion, is it? Million bond issue in this ballot this year. So, that doesn't bode well for us either. That's all.
Any other comments? Ms. Davis?
So, thank you for your comments. And, you know, looking at the language, I'm, you know, when the question of "but not limited to the following," I have no problems marking that off because I do think that the, that this, the money raised would go to the road and bridge construction, maintenance, capital maintenance, and also capital projects that support the business growth of our community. And it is a little higher. It is, you know, one thing that we looked at as a council when we met at our retreat, you know, we discussed different ways to raise revenues, and one of those ways was also through property tax. And again, we felt that this was the most, in the essence of equality, way to spread the tax to go to all members of our community and members who, you know, come into our community to shop and that type of thing. We're not limiting it to just, you know, putting it into a mortgage owner or situation and mill levies there. So, we did feel that the tax was the best way to equally share the burden of some of the needs of our city. I will say, I was born and raised here, so I'm forty-six, almost forty-seven. And I do feel that the city, we have been very cautious in some of our development and some of our spending in roads. And quite frankly, it shows in our city. It shows the streets, the sidewalks. There's wear and tear in our city that when you go down the street, things are a little better kept. And I don't want to look at Wheat Ridge like that. I grew up in a Wheat Ridge that wasn't like that. And I do feel, you know, we can say, well, some of these neighboring cities have a different tax increase, but if you look at some of the major developments in these major cities, Belmar, the Target up on Kipling, look at your receipt, because they do add an additional development fee. So it does take it over what sales tax were requesting. I meant to go to the Walmart Lakeside, but I didn't get a chance to go there today. But I don't know if there is some additional fee for development there. So, I think as a city, what we're trying to do is support some of the small businesses, give them some tax, you know, new businesses coming in. We're trying to share. We're trying to build new business. We're trying to, when they're developing some of these old buildings and putting a lot of their money in, we are trying to incentivize these businesses to build a community. And it's working. It's working well. We've got some great businesses off the ground. And I think that this money has helped support that, and so I will continue to support this tax. I mean, I think we're kind of splitting hairs on three-quarters or one percent, but I do agree. I mean, I'm okay with being transparent and taking off "but not limited to the following." I'm okay with that. And every city council meeting, we do sit here and people who watch are, is happy to ask me. We do let them know what kind of incentives we give to some of the new businesses coming in. So, I do think it's supporting the vision of Wheat Ridge. I think it's time to go a little bit above status quo because status quo is not. I think it's time to go a little bit above status quo because status quo is not where we need to be right now, unfortunately. We've, we're a little behind in development and that type of thing, so I will be supporting this.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Stites?
Yeah, I haven't, quite frankly, supported this tax increase from the word go. I didn't like it. I think as far as being a Wheat Ridge businessman, I think it's going to hurt business. I think we're right, really getting to a good point in this city where we're starting to get some new businesses in. I think it'll affect them, and I think it's going to really drastically affect some of the older businesses, so I have not supported it, and I don't like the language in it. When we passed that, what was it, Jerry?
2004.
2004, the 1 percent that we did. We tied it to hiring 10 new policemen, which we needed, parks, maintenance, and there was some very good that has come out of that. So, the way this is written, you know, initially, I think I was going to vote to put it on the ballot, but I don't think I will because I don't think enough information is out there. And then, too, as far as the city goes, we have not cut our budget, quite frankly. I think that we need to go into our budget and take a look at it and see the areas that we need to cut. We need to get, I think, down to the bare bones on some of this stuff and then possibly show the people why we need a sales tax increase, but when we can't even cut our own budget, then I think that's wrong. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Pond?
Just a procedural question, I guess. I mean, it appears as though, per this document, of course, that we've really, tonight's, the night, so I'm assuming that amendments made on this, if they're small, would be something that we could move forward with, but if they're, if they affect the, some of the math or anything else in here, that it's, that we have some sort of time constraint.
Well, I can answer that. It's an ordinance on second reading, so any amendments proper. Part of the ordinance is, in fact, the ballot question, so you can adjust that language. If you were to change the rate, we could probably, you know, take a short recess and see what that would do to the $6.5 million number, which is an estimate and normally a high estimate, but there's no reason, in my opinion, you couldn't do whatever amendments you need to do tonight. If we need to do a little recalculating, the only one that would be affected, that you'd need to spend any time at all thinking, that would be the $6.5 million number, which is, again, an estimate usually generously high to make certain that it covers whatever the, that's not an exact number, and so it wouldn't really result in a lot of math that we'd have to undertake. So, really, any amendment, I think you can, you can process on the dais.
So, we're still in the public hearing. Any more comments or questions before I close the public hearing and take a motion? Close the public hearing and a motion's in order?
Amendment.
Well, they'll have to take a motion first.
I move to approve Council Bill number 12-2013, an ordinance submitting a ballot question to the voters of the city at November 5, 2013 election concerning an increase in the sales and use tax rate on second reading, and that it take effect immediately upon adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion to approve, it stayed in the pack, it was second by Mr. Reinhardt. Now we can take amendments?
I amend this, I move to amend the ordinance to read the ballot question requesting a 3.5 increase to the city use, sales and use tax. Everything else will be the same, and of course, the monetary.
Oh, you want to say a half a percent?
Half a percent.
Half a percent, not 3.5 percent.
Right, I'm sorry, half a percent. The 3.5 is obviously what I was thinking of. Requesting a half percent increase to the city sales and use tax.
Is there a second on amending the, you'll have to amend two things. You'll have to amend the percentage and also the dollar amount. So, you're cutting it in half, so it's going to be 3.2, 3.25 million, basically. So, is there a second for that amendment? Is there a second? Motion fails for lack of a second. Any other amendments?
I would like to move to amend the language in the ballot question to remove "but not limited to the following."
Second.
Can we have a motion to remove some wording, Mr. Dodd? Do you see where that's at?
Yes.
It was seconded by Mr. Reinhardt. Discussion on the amendment? Mr. Demott?
You know, I guess I should have brought this up before, but, you know, this isn't something that we had taken lightly. It's not something that we just came up with last week. This is something that, for the last four years, has been, you know, and probably longer than that. I've been here four years. I've heard discussions of road fees, stormwater utilities, and I think we've addressed these, and, in my opinion, and we've found that they are disastrous to business owners. I own a business in Wheat Ridge, I own a business in Lakewood, and I own a business in Arvada, and I can tell you that people are not running away from buying pizza in Arvada because the sales tax is higher. I will tell you that there is a stormwater utility and there is a road fee in Arvada, and that costs money every single month, no matter how much, how busy you are, no matter how many pizzas we sell, there it is, right there on the property tax bill, every single In Wheat Ridge, we don't have that, and we, and I, and a lot of people I talk to enjoy that we don't have that. You know, we're also the lowest property tax, I think, in the whole county. I mean, by a good amount, and we've kept it low, I believe, you know, it's never come up in the four years I've been here, but I know that there's been an older population in Wheat Ridge since Wheat Ridge was Wheat Ridge, and there is a reason that that was low, and that's mainly the reason, is to keep that, to make it livable for seniors but attractive for business at the same time. I think there's a balance that you have to attain, and, you know, on these points, as far as, you know, taking out this language and keeping it for the points that we've made, we've seen tax increases before in every aspect, sale, state, property tax, sales tax, city sales tax, and I know that if I say, "We're going to give this much more to the police," all that's going to do is displace from another part of the budget, and each one is going to grow. It's, an across-the-board tax increase really makes it the fairest tax increase there is. You know, as far as sunsetting it, you know, it's really, you know, two years from now, the next council could put it on there to lower it. The next council could also put a stormwater utility or a fee on there that will not go to the voters. That vote will be taken right here on this dais, and citizens have very little to say about it. I think putting a sales tax increase on the ballot is by far the most fair way to ask for a tax increase. That's the most open and transparent way to do it, and, you know, I do it maybe selfishly. I'm a property owner in several of those cities, and I'd like to see those utilities and fees stay away. So, I won't support this amendment, I will support the original question.
Any other comments on the amendment? So, we're striking the language "but not limited to"?
Can I?
I just wanted to ask, who was the second on the?
Mr. Reinhardt? Ms. Davis?
Based off of Joey's discussion, I'm also fine with leaving the "but not limited to the following," so can I?
Well, it's already been seconded, so you have to vote against.
Okay, okay. I'll vote against my own motion.
All right. Please pull the council on the main motion, on the amendment.
On the amendment?
On the amendment, you have to.
The amendment fails 4 to 3 with, five, yeah, five.
Five to three.
Five to three, I'm sorry, with Council members Demott, Stites, Langworthy, Davis, and Starke voting no.
Okay, so we have the main motion with no amendments that Mr. Starke wrote. Any other amendments? Please pull the council, the main motion is not amended.
Can you wait just a minute till I get this down? Don't vote yet.
Paul and Jay, Reinhardt.
Voting on the main motion.
Main motion is not amended.
Motion carries 6 to 2 with Council members Stites and Jay voting no.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is decisions, resolutions, and motions. Item number two is Resolution 29-2013. Mr. Pond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 20-2013 authorizing the appropriate city officials to execute an intergovernmental agreement by and between the County of Jefferson, State of Colorado, and the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado regarding the administration of their respective duties concerning the conduct of the coordinated election to be held on November 5, 2013. Is motion ordered?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution 29-2013 authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the County of Jefferson regarding the administration of their respective duties concerning the conduct of the coordinated election to be held on November 5, 2013.
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number two, seconded by Mr. Demott. Please pull the council.
Is that correct?
Can you re-clear, re-vote, please?
I cleared it. Motion carries 8-0.
Thank you. Item three is Resolution 30-2013. Mr. Pond?
Thank you. Resolution 30-20, 2013 authorizing the appropriate city officials to execute an intergovernmental agreement by and between the County of Jefferson, State of Colorado, and the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado regarding the production of a mailed notice concerning ballot issues. Is motion ordered?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution 30-2013 authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the County of Jefferson regarding the administration of their respective duties regarding the production of a mailed notice concerning ballot issues.
Second.
We have a motion for approval of item number three, was seconded by Mr. Starke. Discussion on the main motion? Please pull the council.
Motion carries 8-0.
Thank you. I believe that concludes our agenda for this evening. Move on to city managers' matters?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything this evening.
Thank you. City attorneys' matters?
Counsel, just as a report, you directed me to conduct an investigation at your last meeting, and as you know, that's taking place right now, and I'm being assisted in that. I'm hoping to have that investigation conducted or completed properly, and it's my goal to get you the results of that before your next meeting, business meeting on September 9. And I won't give you a specific date yet because I don't have it, and the investigation's complete, but I appreciate your giving me the additional time and your, you're providing your time as you're called to be interviewed, those of you that are. That's the only report I have, and hopefully you'll get more from me soon.
Thanks.
Thank you.
City clerks' matters?
I have one item that I wanted to just tell the public about. Many of you may not know that we have a mailing list, an email list, and a, actually, hard copy snail mail list, if you will, for people who want to get minutes of the council meetings and notes from the study sessions, either email to them or mail to them as a hard copy. And if there's anybody out there that wants to be on that list, just call the city clerk's office, give us your email address. That list is only used for that thing. It doesn't go anywhere else. So, if you would like to get minutes from the city council meetings and notes from the study sessions, let the clerk's office know, and we will add your name to that list. There are, there is a very small list, there's a few folks out there that don't have computers, and they want to have the things mailed to them, and we do that as a courtesy. I think there's maybe eight people, it's not much, but we have that service available. And then I just wanted to report to everyone the deadline for nomination petitions for the upcoming municipal election was at 5 o'clock this evening, and right now, we have candidates in every, for every office that's up. For the mayor, candidates Joyce J. and Mike Stites have had their petitions are sufficient. Candidate, proposed candidate, Park Worthington is, there was a problem with the form of his petition, and he has three days to cure that, so we'll see what that brings. District 1 has four candidates that are good to go, as they say, their petitions are sufficient. Those candidates are Davis Reinhardt, Jerry DeTulio, Monica Duran, and Karen Thaler. District 2 has two candidates as well. They both brought their petitions in today. We checked them out, and they each have our short, two valid signatures, so they have some days to cure that, both candidates, so that's, I'm sure, they were minor things about addresses that won't be any problem fixing, so I'm sure they will be the candidates. And in District 3, Dick Matthews and Tim Fitzgerald are the candidates. Likewise, their petitions are, were sufficient, and they are good to go. In District 4, Joseph Demott and Genevieve Wooden are the candidates, and Mr. Demott had a problem with people who signed his petition who don't live in District 4. So, he has a very small handful of signatures to fix by Thursday noon, so I'm sure you'll be able to handle that. And that's all. If there are any other candidates out there and here to, this Thursday evening at 7 o'clock, it'll be here in council chambers, we have the lot drawing where we will actually draw names out of a hat to, or a bowl or something appropriate, to find out the order on the ballot. We have, that's by our city laws that we, we don't, incumbents don't come first, and it's not alphabetical, it's, the order on the ballot is established by lot drawing, so we'll take care of that, and there will also be some information about the financial forms that have to be filled out, and filled out, and some kind of, you know, do's and don'ts of campaigning and things to watch for, and campaign practices and things like that. So, those of you sitting up here who are running again, be sure to come Thursday night, and if there are candidates out in TV land, they are reminded to, we send them official notice, but I wanted to, just the more times you tell people, the more likely they are to remember, so. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stites?
Great festival this year. Our congratulating, my congratulations, go to the festival committee because that's a lot of work, and it really pulled off good. Would be a great time to relocate your home or office to Wheat Ridge. If you need any help, see one of us or staff, we'd be happy to do it. Positive thing, with school starting, please watch out for the kids, the traffic. You'd hate to have anything happen. You'd hate to have anything happen, and as always, please try to find it by the Wheat Ridge thing.
Thank you. Mr. Starke?
Uh, nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Langworthy?
Yes, just a small, um, something. Kurt Gilmore, who has been a very, um, active proponent of Wheat Ridge and merit, many other charities, um, lost a battle to cancer. And so they, our thoughts are with him. Um, they have not scheduled a memorial service at this time, but our, our prayers are with Jane Anne and, and the family.
Ms. Davis?
Uh, just a couple of things. Um, I'm sorry to hear about Mr. Gilmore. I actually grew up with his kids, Laura and Anne, so I'm sorry to, and, and their younger sister, so, uh, sorry to hear about that. I do want to send a shout out because Melrose Manor had their seventh annual block party this year, and it was a hit, as usual. I think our crowd was bigger than ever, probably had over a hundred and twenty people at our block party. And, um, the police were there, not because we were too noisy, but because they were, uh, supporting the community, and I want to thank the police department for, for, uh, being there, and also the fire department was there. And, uh, that was a huge hit because they brought the big trucks and the ladder trucks, and oh my gosh, it was a huge hit. And, uh, so I also want to thank the councilmen and women who, uh, came to the, the event. Uh, other than myself, there were, uh, four other folks there, so I appreciate you attending, and I know our community appreciates your attendance, too. But, um, I can tell you, and I encourage other neighborhoods to have these block parties because it really, um, it's amazing how to, you know, to create a community and, and have a community get along so well, and, uh, you know, we're our own police dogs and ADT and, and all of the above. You know, we send out email chains. We're thinking about doing a website, so, um, if anybody needs any help on setting one up, I'm happy to, to at least give you some advice from our block party, but a shout out to, to the, to the folks that came, and, and thank you for that. The other thing in mind is that, uh, one of the things is we discussed today that as a citizen, um, we'll probably be pulling together citizens of Wheat Ridge to, um, to work on some of the, the sales tax and the education to the public. So one of the things that we have to do as council, if, if any of us, and we'll be meeting as citizens, but if at any time two or more of us, or more than two of us meet, we have to post that on the website. So, um, one, if you're interested in being a part of that, um, as a citizen, I'm probably going to be a part of that, and we'll have to register an entity and that type of thing, but, uh, just want to let you guys know if there's anything, and more than, uh, two council folks will be there, we, we will post it as well. But again, we'll be there as citizens and not as, uh, council folks.
Ms. Jay?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Pond?
Not much. I actually just want to reiterate what Mr. Stites said about the, uh, festival. Had a great, um, great time down there with the family, and it looks like a lot of hard work was put in, so appreciate, appreciate that. And the kids appreciated that, so we had a great time, and, um, you know, I just want to make a comment. The last couple of weeks, we've had, we've had, I, I think, good, good, uh, attendance here with people coming in and commenting, uh, during public comment. And although we have some hard decisions to make, I think it's great when we, when we get the participation, so I just want to thank everyone for, for, uh, showing up and participating.
Uh, Mr. Reinhardt?
Uh, I don't have much tonight, but I also, um, knew Kurt Gilmore and sent my thoughts go out to him, and, and sort of in a similar note, I hope we all have some thoughts for Commissioner, former Commissioner McCaskey, who's, who's also struggling with cancer at this time, and, uh, needs, needs some good thoughts, so.
Mr. Demont?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, another awesome Carnation Festival. Um, I've watched that, um, festival from the window of the restaurant for years and years, and I knew it was a big deal, but this was my first year as a board member, and, uh, I'll tell you, it's, uh, quite a grueling task that they put on there. Um, there was a few dozen committee people that, uh, really kind of pulled together and, and get that whole thing rolling, and it is quite a feat to see happen. And on that note, next year, we do have some committee members that are, have been doing it for decades, um, and, uh, we don't get a whole lot of new volunteers and new committee people. Um, it's a once-a-month meeting, and if anyone's, uh, looking to see how things work from the inside and, uh, have some time to volunteer on Tuesday evenings, once a month, um, we would definitely welcome some new, uh, committee members and board members. And we, of course, welcome new ideas all the time. Um, I apologize, I don't have any numbers or anything to get you, but the carnationfestival.com has a contact link, or of course, you can call somebody from the city, they can get you in touch with somebody. But I just want to thank all the fellow board members, committee members, volunteers, um, organizations, the Rotary, the Optimists, Wheat Ridge High School, uh, I mean, I could go on and on, but it was, it was as big as ever, and, and, uh, hope we make it bigger for its forty-fifth and, and so on years. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll adjourn for, take a five-minute break. We'll come back for the study session up here, so let's come back about, uh, five or ten till. On the agenda? Do we have anybody here from the public to speak on an item on the agenda? I guess seeing none, we'll move on to, uh, it changes to the agenda? Item one is the tax incentive request for Taste of Home Cooking. Mr. Goff?
Yep, great. Yep, thanks. Um, we have Steve Art here. We'll let him, um, uh, go over the, uh, proposal.
Thank you very much, members of council. Uh, first off, just want to thank you very much for all you're doing to help promote business within the City of Wheat Ridge. Tonight, we come before you with the first item, which would be a, um, an enhanced sales tax incentive program, which we call the ESTEP program. For a new business that's opening on Kipling and Forty-first, it's called a Taste of Home Cooking. It's actually two businesses that are set up. There's two LLCs there. A Taste of Home Cooking, which will be handling the food operations, and Wine Not, W-I-N-E, uh, Wine Not, which will handle the alcohol sales, but together, they're really one business owned by the same person. So for the sake of tonight's purpose, we will reference them both as, um, a Taste of Home Cooking. They purchased this property at four one 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 and four one zero one forty-first. Those of you who've been in town a while probably remember that as the Paz Inn and the Mercedes Restaurant. Paz Inn closed sometime, and I believe it was around two thousand and eight, um, according to our sales tax records, and Mercedes Restaurant, uh, had a fire in it prior to my starting here sometime in two thousand and eleven. It ceased operations. Um, the Taste of Home Cooking that is owned by, uh, uh, Robert Rotella purchased the building. It's about ten thousand square feet. He started remodels of that. Uh, he will be having his grand opening, from what I understand, on September the sixth. He did approach the city about, uh, what sort of incentives we had, and, and council encouraged them to, uh, encouraged us to go visit him about, uh, the ESTEP program. It'll be ten thousand square foot restaurant. It'll employ thirty staff members upon opening. It will have a full-service bar. The restaurant will be open seven days a week from six AM to nine PM, and then on weekends until ten PM. Uh, the advantage to having this business, and it is a niche-type business that we're trying to bring in our community, more opportunities for our citizens to not only shop in the community, but also to have a fine meal within the community. And if you had not visited his restaurant in Arvada previously, I think you would, uh, agree that it, it is marvelous food that he cooks there. He has invested, the owner has invested approximately six hundred thousand dollars of his own funds into the, uh, the redo of this restaurant. He has got sign-off on it, so he is, as I said, ready to open his doors there. Um, the project will also revitalize a blighted area of town. That end of Kipling, as you approach I seventy, has some dilapidated buildings in there. And so it is probably something that will bring new life to that area, provide those citizens in town an opportunity to, uh, have a, a nice new meal in town, so, you know, we have one at, at Twenty-ninth now that opened, now we have this end of town, so we're starting to encompass the entire town. Working with the business, uh, we have deemed that, uh, the public improvements would probably equal about seventy-six thousand dollars, um, that we've identified. Uh, what we would like to do is to offer them a, a five-year ESTEP program, which would rebate back their enhanced sales tax at fifty percent of the enhanced sales tax for a period of five years, with a maximum not to, uh, exceed seventy-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars. We may round that off to seventy-three seven. That would be my report. Mr. Goff, if you have any other, uh, thing to add? With that, we'd be happy to answer questions.
Questions? Ms. Langworthy?
Just a quick technical one. Under the terms, because this still has to come back to council.
Correct.
Okay. Under the terms, it has, um, the first, shot commence on the first day of the calendar month, following the month in which the owner receives their certificate of upper occupancy. Have they already received their certificate of occupancy?
Yes, they have.
Should we, I mean, can this stand, or should we make an adjustment? Because there, there's no way this is going to be approved by September first.
You are correct, and we can certainly amend that to the night of the council meeting or very close to that. It's got to be not a problem.
I, I didn't know if that mattered or not, other than normally they're done in advance, but I want to make sure that that language didn't trip up somewhere. Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Starke?
Thank you, Mr. Art. I had a couple of questions. We have two of these that we're considering tonight, and we've considered others in the past, and some of the variable elements in the ESTEP program appear to be the percentage, uh, you know, twenty-five, fifty, or a hundred percent, and, and the time period. In this one, it's five years, and I believe in the next one, it's three years, and I was just wondering, uh, what, what sort of were the determinations that you used in, in, how does that come about?
The city manager and I evaluated it, um, based upon investment into the project, that we felt that, that the private investment of this larger restaurant probably deemed that they could, they could use more of that funding back.
Well, and we also heard from council that you, you know, you'd like some, I think, more, um, stringent, not sure if that's the right word, but, um, criteria on, on some of these factors. Um, so we've internally, um, discussed that we should set, um, the initial, uh, share back at fifty percent, um, and then council can have, um, the discretion to change that if they would like. And then the years can vary, um, again, depending on how much sales tax, um, the business, uh, is proposed to generate, um, and how much the public improvements, um, are for that project also.
And I had one follow-up, and I noticed on the next one, we have a recommendation for participation in the building, in the business development zone, the BDZ, and I didn't see that in this, and I wondered whether there was any, why?
I was directed to offer the ESTEP. Um, if council so desires, we certainly could approach the business about a business development zone rebate. I'm not sure at this point what their, uh, what they paid in the use tax, but if that is council's wish, we certainly could. And if they would like, we could probably bring it back.
Well, another determination, I think, too, on that was that the, um, the Taste Home Cooking was, um, pretty well, um, into the process of, of completing their construction. Um, the green herb was still, um, just pulled permit not too long ago, and we're just starting their construction, so the BDZ is, is a rebate of, of the building use tax, so we kind of use that as a termination, too, since, um, the greener, or not greener, but Taste Home Cooking, Cooking was kind of a, an ask after the fact. And BDZ also is related to employment more than the ESTEP. I mean, they're, they're both proposed to increase employment in the city, but I think the employment of the, uh, the green herb place is, is a higher level, um, salary. I'm not sure. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Stites?
Just a quick question. How much were the building permit fees?
Let's see.
Well, for this home, Taste of Home Cooking, I, I didn't calculate the building permit fees because we were not doing a business development zone program for that. because we were not doing a business development zone program for this.
I think it's in the memo, Steve, isn't it? Didn't we stick it in there?
I didn't see it in there.
I don't think so, once again, because we weren't proposing a business development zone.
It was on that spreadsheet. You didn't put it on this? Use tax paid. The Green Herb paid $13,500 in use tax. The
I didn't.
Taste of Home Cooking, yeah, we have a spreadsheet here with all the costs, but for some reason that didn't get entered. We can find that number for you if you'd like, quickly.
No, that's right.
Okay.
It'd be just kind of nice to know what other investments they have.
Mr. Reinhardt?
Just, just sort of, as we look at these programs, I have no objection to either of these particular things, but I would like to comment that from my standpoint, the, these sorts of incentives ought to be evaluated customarily before programs put into place. And the, the logic behind the program is that we're incentivizing things. Now, we seem to have a program that we understand got, need a little help to get over the line. But as, as a broad rule, I would, I would see a preference to, to getting these applications before projects are started. So, you know, we're seeing that we're actually making a difference in that go-no-go decision of the, of the applicants. I think that, from my experience, is sort of the more customary way to look at them.
Mr. Demont?
This really isn't in one of our target redevelopment areas, like 38th or Wadsworth or something. And on, on that note, we really don't have an organization like Wheat Ridge 2020 working off of that, off of that corridor. So a lot of the business owners down by me and down on Kipling, and they're not aware of these programs. And if, you know, you walk up to a regular guy who works at a restaurant like me and goes, hey, and you say, hey, want an S-DEP? They go, whoa, hey. You know, so that's kind of what happened, you know. Actually, that guy probably said it exactly like that. But, you know, so it's kind of, it's kind of just a foreign concept. And so I want to thank Steve for reaching out to him again, because I know he had asked and, and, you know, they came, he, actually his contractor came to me about some bathroom thing. I don't know what happened there. But anyway, I asked him and he asked about it. And, and I said, well, I don't know. So we asked and, and that's why it was a little bit late. It is, you know, they're trying to get open. They've delayed their opening by a couple of months now, just for cost reasons, or whatever reason. But they have, you know, gutted that building, you know. So on the, on the money note, I know the BDZ, you know, it is, I, I feel pretty late for that, you know, to get into that, especially, you know, the building department's probably been paid and done. So we're not really worried about that. The 50% for five years is comparable to what we gave Colorado Plus on one of our main corridors. And, you know, some of the other ones we've given kind of off the main corridors are more in the 33% range, I think, if I remember right, for like three years. Percent, percent? Oh, okay, for three or something. So, you know, I think businesses appreciate anything, you know. So, you know, I think since they, we're, we're going the BDZ and the use tax rebate, you know, I would definitely, you know, hope that they hit the numbers that they're looking for. And the 50% over five years is, you know, maybe a bit high, you know. I, I would say it'd be neat if we could do a 33 for five years, a third of it for five years. I'm not going to try and do that calculation, because I don't even have my phone or nothing with me. But I guess we could figure that out. Just because it's not on one of our main redevelopment corridors and stuff.
Well, and actually, Kipling is, is, the corridor is identified in the comprehensive plan, in our economic development plans as a, as a corridor. Yeah, we don't have active support for it as much, but.
I have to say that in my mind, Kipling is a place we should be thinking, I mean, and we
Well, it needs it. There's a lot.
I know. I mean, I don't have any
I mean, go by this building, it's, it looks great, you know.
I don't have any problem in us
They did a great job.
As well. I think it needs it.
Does anybody have a problem with this moving forward to a regular meeting?
Both of them? Or did we, did we settle both?
Well, that was item one.
We haven't talked about the Green Herb yet.
So, item one is done. We'll move on to item two, the Green Herb.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So the Green Herb is a business that approached the city prior to the beginning of their construction for a business development zone loan rebate, as well as an S-DEP. To give you a little background on the Green Herb, they are an existing Wheat Ridge business. They lease a site on I-70 frontage road. They have been looking in town to relocate, to build a new site for a couple of years since I began here. They actually previously located a site right at Ward Road and 44th Avenue. Due to some site constraints there, really a big billboard that would have been in the middle of their facility, they decided not to build on that site and they continue their look. In 2011, they found the site on Kipling. In late 2012, they actually purchased the site. It's a real kind of an odd lot, because it's got a very small frontage and very long in the back. It's got a 100-foot wide frontage and it's 450 feet deep. So it really limits the development that had gone on there. We have many realtors that have been marketing that program out there, that site out there, and have not had any bites from it. The only previous bite we had on that site was a mini storage. The neighbors along there really objected to that, and the planning commission denied that application. This came along. It's a retail facility. It's a service facility. It's an employer of 20, 16 jobs now. They anticipate to go to 20, 22 employees upon the finish of the construction. Upon completion of it, the property value will increase dramatically, which will aid the city in that. It's a very valuable business. It's been in business for quite a few years, so it's, it's not a, a risk at any chance for them to come in here. And with that, staff would recommend, as the staff report says, that we assist with a, an S-DEP in there, which would be a 50% S-DEP for three years. We're basing the S-DEP upon, as the code is written, that it is upon what the property that they have purchased is currently generating, which is zero. So we will start at a zero base and rebate back 50% of that for a period of three years with no cap, because we think, we think it's a business that can really take off. For those people that are listening to this on television or the internet right now, the Green Herb sells medicinal. It is not a marijuana facility.
I know.
It is not a marijuana facility. They sign, they do vitamin supplements, chiropractic services out of the offices. We'd also recommend, because they did make the request for 100% rebate of their building use taxes, which is approximately $13,500 that has been paid to the city already. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions, council.
No, no question. Just to comment that I think this is great, because I, I was on the planning commission when we saw some of these other ideas come forward. I know this is a challenging site, and it's fantastic to see that they're committed to the staying in Wheat Ridge and building on this site. So I absolutely support this.
Ms. Davis?
I'm glad you clarified that on the Green Herb, because my next thing was going to say I am a customer of the Green Herb. So I don't want people to make things up. But I, I just had a couple of questions. So what you're doing is you're saying the sale, the, you're, you're starting the sales tax with a base of zero. So you're not using any of their current sales tax, because they are in the Wheat Ridge market. And again, I'm not, I'm not squashing this, but they, they are, you know, on Ward Road. So, and we're still using a zero base with that?
You're absolutely correct, because the code is written that it is the amount of sales tax that is produced on the site.
However, the city attorney did, we had the city attorney look at that. And he said he really had three options. You could, the code doesn't specifically speak to this. So you could use their, their base at their other site. You could start at zero, or you could look at like
Like a happy medium or something.
I think, to find a base. So we went ahead and recommended. It is a pretty low increment. I think we're projecting $5,000 a year is what their, their sales tax increment would be, above zero.
And, and I guess they do chiropractic there. Are they going to continue to do that at this new site?
They will. Oh, yeah. He's moving over and actually expanding their services. But I don't believe there's any sales tax on the chiropractic service, so.
No, I was just curious service-wise, you know, for the TV land. And then I just kind of had a thought. So when, so it's 100% of the building use tax. With that in mind, help refresh my memory as far as, is there any, with the building use tax, that's just basically a tax that, it's not that we have folks coming out and inspecting and that type of thing. It's just a tax.
Correct. Just the use tax, which is base, it's 60% of the total value of the project times our tax rate of 3%. But then there's also building permit fees, review fees that they still pay that pay for our staff time, and we're not proposing to rebate those, just the use tax.
And then one last question. I don't know that this is just a question or curiosity, because I think a lot of the stuff they do, they mail, correct? Is that, they do a lot of mailing?
Yes.
So that would be a non-tax, unless, of course, I live in Wheat Ridge and you mail it to me. But if I mail it to Alabama or something.
Correct. Correct.
Okay. Just some questions.
Anybody have a problem with this one, moving forward to a regular meeting?
Just a heads up too, we are working with the city attorney on both of our, both of these codes, both the BDZ and the S-DEP code, to look at some language changes, proposed language changes, and maybe put some more distinct, specific criteria in it based on some of the examples we've, we've had in the past. So we'll be bringing that forward to you soon, to maybe deal even with this issue of, of, of business moves within the city. You know, do you start at zero or what? So there, there's a few things that we recommend changes, so.
Okay, we're adjourned.